Okay, we're now getting ready to start the process for bill number 20-0534. And you notice up on the screen, I have a list basically of directions for people that have signed up for public testimony. And the committee staff coordinate the public testimony, so please be patient with that. If you're connected online, please use the raised hand function to indicate you wish to testify. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking. Users who call in cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by the host one by one. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when they are unmuted. Please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If the speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back and provide their testimony in the chat function.
Come on.
So again, we're going to start bill 20-0534, sale of property 5001 Rice's Town Road, AKA Langston Hughes Elementary School. This is a building that is situated in the 6th Councilmatic District. I represent the 6th Councilmatic District. Again, this is for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property known as 5001 Rice's Town Road, AKA Langston Hughes Elementary School. This bill was introduced on May 18th, 2020. The bill was sponsored by the council president, Brandon Scott, on behalf of the administration. And there are some comments that I want to start with about this particular sale of property. As you know, sale of properties come through this committee. And I'm want to put, I have some extra emphasis that I want to put on this particular property because this property and the, this process is a phase that with all sale of properties, it's the same type of phase, it's the same process. There is really nothing completely different. I can go all the way back to which constantly stays in my mind is the process of the Paquins School. Remember those of you that remember when the Paquins School was going through the process of sale and then, you know, teens could not go to, pregnant teens could not attend regular school and they had that private school. There's other properties throughout the city that have been through the same process and phase. Agreements were made long before in housing with nonprofits and so on. All that took, takes place before it comes through and gets through this council. I look at this particular property and the organization that has been in that school for going over three years have just been phenomenal with the Park Heights community. And it's ironic that, you know, on this particular day and all the things that we are having around this country and also in Baltimore City with, you know, the issue that basically the terrible murder that happened with George Floyd and today is his, the funeral and mourning of his family. So I want to give my condolences and prayers to that family. All of this is connected with the constant words and problems and the meaning behind Black Lives Matter. This council has continually tried to push equity and equality and just all the things in helping many of our impoverished, poor, neglected neighborhoods throughout Baltimore City. And I can go back, this is, this particular property and the things that they have been doing, not for just that area, but for this city, really is heartfelt to me. And they, the volunteers and the people of that community, it has just been, just a phenomenal force in helping to maintain and keep things moving forward in, in Park Heights, in that 21215 community through this coronavirus. We have even picked up more problems that have happened and are still going on in our, our communities of despair and, you know, I, the economic impact, just all of those things are just so important on the well-being and the continuation of this and the transformation of what's about to happen in Park Heights as well as any other neighborhood. And I, I next just want to, I've got a slew of over 35, 40 letters have come in after my first introduction, when I did it in the first reading. I'm not going to read all of these things, but these, I just want to just mention some names of people or organizations that support what's going on in that building with the organization that has that building. And George Mitchell, my hat off to him, he is the, you know, the leader of that organization. And, you know, we, we, every council wished they had a George Mitchell that, that does the things that they do in that building every single day from like 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And here's some names of some participants, not their, their other nonprofits that work in that building or have done things in that building, other city agencies have done things in that building. And I just, I kind of just spread some of the letters out. And I'll start with Life Bridge Health, Sinai Life Bridge Health. We know that they have been a staple and a part of, of that community as well. They do a lot of community development in that community. Some key points that they have put in their letter of what Langston Hughes Community and Resource Center does in that community. There's, it's, they said the education, the training, even just the convening of neighbors and families, the resources, the food. And they're, they started giving out food even before we had this pandemic and they continued to give out food. And now they've become a main hub for the Maryland Food Bank. The community engage, they, they add in their letter about community engagement, they add in their letter about opportunity. So Life Bridge Health. I also got a personal letter of support from the state comptroller, Peter Francho. Also received letters from the faith-based community, from, from pastors that have used that facility and support. I've got received letters from various communities, associations, from the 5th and the 6th District. The person that runs Bell Park Towers over there, the person, the president of Glenn Community, a school coordinator from Arlington Elementary. So I think the association was Hilltop 4100. I received letters from community, Neighborhood United, which is the conglomerate of just about every community association in the Park Heights community. I got, received a letter from an organization that works there called, that is housed in the facility, Willing to Work Wednesday Movement, which helps and supports and trains ex-offenders. We all remember I Can, We Can, which is a drug, drug treatment center that Mr. Israel Kason, that has history in Park Heights, supports what is going on with this particular property. Veterans Outreach, the Z-Happ Senior Center. There's another one, I mean, just a slew of letters of support. And I just can't say it over and over again, all these people, Parts of Peace. Let's see, what else? The State Department of General Services has always, has also sent a letter in of support. Some other former elected officials that were involved, from Senator Robinson on to former delegate Bilal Ali. Just, you know, promoters that deal with, has a medical tech program. And we're going to have a few people that are, that have gotten on board that's going to testify. So I don't, you know, this is something that has been going on and on and on throughout our city, so it's nothing new. Nothing has been done behind the scenes. This is just a phenomenal thing that has taken place and saved lives, saved money for the city. You know, there's an agreement, that MOU that was put together. So this organization wants to continue what they're doing and they're taking it to another level. So on that note, I'm going to have some other people.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, councilman.
I just want to, I just want to mention one thing that you probably forgot. I was able to get the $200,000 from the NFL and the Players Coalition. And I was able to identify Life Bridge Health, and they actually donated $50,000 to Life Bridge Health. They gave food also to Langston Hughes also.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate that, councilman. Um, where are you going to go now? So on that note, I want to have, we're going to go ahead and get moved with the agency reports. And I want to start with the law department.
Madam Chair, this is Vic Turbola for the law department. We're approved, we're, we're willing to, or we are prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Victor. Any questions to the law department? Department of Planning, did you have something you'd like to say about your favorable report?
We stand by our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Department of Finance.
Hi, Madam Chair. This is Mara James for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We do not oppose this sale.
Thank you. Department of Real Estate. Department of Real Estate. I see Walter and, okay, Walter and James Knighton. Hi, Walter. Did you, did you have your words?
We stand by favorably our report.
Okay. And Stephanie Murdock with the Department of Housing, are you on, Stephanie?
I am. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing. I apologize for, for losing you guys earlier. Thank you to the mayor's office for stepping in with our reports. Our agency stands by our report in support of this bill.
Thank you. And we also have Hillary Chester on from the Department of General Services. Hi, Hillary. Would you like to say some words on this property?
I, we are in support of the potential sale. We, I don't believe we were named on the bill itself, but we don't have any questions to it. The information that I can provide, if there's any questions, but.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any committee members, you have any, any questions? Okay, so now we're going to have, I think we have some people on.
Counselwoman, I have a, I have a question for DGS.
Yes. Councilman Slipher.
Yes. So Hillary, are you, DGS is the agency that handles this MOU in contract, correct?
That, yes, we're the managing agency for the, for the property. We don't, we don't, yes, in that case, yes.
Gotcha. And so what's in that MOU? Do you guys have all of the requirements that have been required of the MOU? Because I know that there was a question about whether or not information that is required under the MOU has been provided to you guys. Is that information all been provided to you guys?
Not as specified under the right-of-entry terms, but we have received information to speak to all of the requirements, but not necessarily always in the right format.
So Councilman Slipher, you said a question from, you didn't say a question from who?
What's that?
You said there was a question from someone.
Well, yeah, I mean, well, well, now I'm asking, so if you don't have all the information based on the MOU, does that mean the MOU is not in good standing? Or is there a certain period of time that it'll take to get all that information correct?
I, I mean, I can't speak to that in terms of the, the actual legal sufficiency of what was provided. You know, if, if the sale is approved and, and that, you know, that would prevent another MOU from, from being required. But no, I don't, I don't have, I can't speak to the sufficiency of what was required or its completeness.
Gotcha. So can we ask that question to the law department? Who's here on behalf of the law department?
Counselmember, this is Vic Turbola from the law department.
How big are you?
So I'm fine. I, you know, that's a, that, unless we saw the MOU and saw the documents that were provided, I wouldn't be able to answer that question.
So if the information that's required under Exhibit A in the MOU is, has not been and is not provided to you guys, does that mean that as it's required in the MOU, if that information is not provided and you don't have it, does that mean that the MOU is not in good standing?
That's, that's, counsel member, that's not necess, I'm sorry, let me put my, my video on. That counsel member, that's not necessarily the case. It would, you would have to see the four corners of that document and see exactly what it says to determine its legal sufficiency at this point.
Well, did you guys review the, did you review the MOU to ensure that all the requirements have been met?
I have not seen that document and I don't think, I don't, I'm not aware that anybody in the law department has seen it.
Thank you, Victor. Do the members have any, members of the committee have any questions so we can move on to testimony? Mr. George Mitchell, are you on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. You're on and everyone hears you. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak before you in reference to the purchase of this building. We've been in this building for three, a little bit over three years now. We had a MOU, a right-of-entry program where they said, you, within a year, year and a half, we will be able to purchase the building, like other, like a lot of other buildings have been purchased throughout the city, Baltimore Advantage school buildings. This building had been closed for four and a half years. I live in the neighborhood, in fact, the street right out here at the building's name, that's my mother, Earleese Mitchell Way. We, we were, we did not want this building to become a white elephant. We made sure the grass stayed cut. We made sure the grass stayed cut. And when I came into this building three and a half years ago, through DGS, we just wanted to do an after-school program. And this building goes all the way back to Stephanie Rollin Blake, when she made me follow the year because we were doing an after-school program here. When I came into this building, the building had been closed for close to four to five years. There were rats, mice, I mean, rats is as big as raccoons, mice, cockroaches, you name it, trash had been left in the building from the previous time we moved in. I almost started to walk back out the door. But we decided we got, we cleaned up the building, within three days, we were able to have our first after-school program here. We've grown significantly since then. I think our, our work speaks for itself. We have over 300 different people have been into this building. We're the largest free Wi-Fi facility in the state of Maryland, because we know we needed Wi-Fi in Park Heights. We have 43,000 square feet of free Wi-Fi. And all these things are done under our expense. We, the governor had his meetings here, his cabinet meetings here twice. And what she said, she said, George, if I had, if I had a building like this in every urban community in the state of Maryland, the crime would be less. Peter Francho, our state comptroller, has been here at least 20, 25 times. We have all types of activity. We have certified accredited nursing program where folks can come in and get their GNA, CNA nursing license. And the good thing about this, the license they get is, is just as good as you go to John Hockers or University of Maryland. The good thing about this, we're open seven days a week for them to get their license, till 10 o'clock at night. So people can come and get their license, seven days a week, which they can't do at John Hockers, can't do at BCCC. We have the only, the only facility where you get tested for federal government jobs, TSA, the Baltimore City Police Department, I-9 verification. We have the only testing site in the city. The other testing site that was in Baltimore City closed down over a year ago. So we have it upstairs on our second floor. Of course, we closed down because of Corona as well. But I can go there, we have a power project here, which is Holy Athletics League, we're the largest power project in the, in the tri-state area, Virginia, Maryland and Virginia. We have mental health, we have church services, we have financial literacy. We even have Spanish classes, Mandarin classes for our community. On top of that, we're the number one food pantry in the state of Maryland, in the whole state. In fact, when I finish today, I have a webinar at 4 o'clock with Maryland, with Maryland Food Bank, because they missed, but we got to have you on this webinar. We have Loyola University here. We have, we started a baseball team. We had a field up at C.C. Jackson that wasn't being used. So we started the Park Heights Black Sox for kids for three years. We got uniforms and everything. And we're not, we're not asking for, we've done this on our own. We're not asking for, in fact, we probably saved the city money. Because we haven't gotten any grants from the city or anybody else. They're paying the utilities. And what we want to do, we can pay our own utilities. It's going to save the city money. And what has happened with what's going on now, the city needs that somebody is going to help them save some money. So we're going to pay our own utilities. And that's why I asked you to, to give us a favorable response to purchasing the building. It's in the MOU agreement anyway, they said we would purchase the building. But we're the only, this building, when we got it, was the only school building in the city of Baltimore that didn't get broken into and cause all types of, two of the buildings that got broken into, but they had to turn them down because of so much, you know, the only building that had not been broken into.
So Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell, so do you have, do you have anybody else with you that is testifying? Because I do, we do have a couple people on, on the line. I just want to reiterate that this is, this facility is located in the 6th Councilmatic District. And many sale, of sales of property come through this committee. And it's ironic that this particular property is having so many questions of interest all of a sudden. But, so I want to move on. Do you have any other people with you that want to come to the?
Counselwoman, can I, can I ask a question?
Who is this?
Counselman Slipher.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I mean, you know, just in response to what you just said, as far as questions are concerned, I mean.
You can have all the questions, you can, you can ask, anyone can ask any questions, but I can also continue to say and reiterate what I want to say as chair of this committee.
That's fine. You know, I think one of the, the main reasons for concern that from multiple council members is around the word that this bill allows for.
Can I cut you off? You're not, you're not speaking for multiple council members, you are testifying for yourself.
Okay. So I, as a council member in Baltimore City, have a concern that, you know, this bill mentions about the ability to have a private sale. And I do not think that it is in the city's best interest to have any building that is owned by the city to be able to be done in a private sale behind closed doors.
Counselman Slipher.
Are you going to keep cutting me off for being finished what I'm saying?
Counselman Slipher, if you were familiar with the process, every single, goes through this process.
I understand that. And so, so, so.
And they all have the same, they all have the same language.
Yeah, but, but I can tell you the, I have a question around, so you're saying that all buildings in the city should be able to be done in a private sale behind closed doors? Because this, this bill allows for that. It says a private sale, which means can be no community input, it can be a straight, it can be a straight sale behind closed doors to any, I don't, I don't even know who the entity, I don't, I don't know what entity is trying to even buy it. I'm just asking specifically about the bill that you're asking the committee and then the council on Monday to support.
This is, this is a city process that goes, that goes through all sales of property. So I don't know why all of a sudden you're honing in on this particular one.
I'm not, I'm not. We've met, we've met on multiple properties across different districts. I mean, we had, we had public input, we had public.
The city agencies deal with this. I want to.
So my question is around, why is the word private in this bill? Why are we allowing for a private sale? Why is there not a, why is that word private in this bill?
Is there an agency rep that could speak to that? Walter Horton, Mr. Horton of Real Estate.
That's the standard language that is in all sales ordinances, and it gives the mayor the privilege to determine whether or not he wants to do this process through an RFP, which is a public process, or if he chooses to do it under a private process.
Thank you.
Gotcha. So, so Chairwoman, is this, is this process going to be a public one through an RFP or is this one going to be a private?
No. No. It's already, the, we're, we're towards the end of the process. That's when.
I thought you said, this is, you said this is part of the process and this is just, this, we're following the standard protocol. So Mr. Horton, can you answer that question? Will this sale be a private sale or will it be a public process with an?
This will be a private sale. This will be a private sale.
This will be a private sale. Okay. So does that mean that each council member can choose which, which properties in their district are done publicly and which ones are done privately? Who makes that decision?
As I've indicated, the mayor makes that call.
Gotcha. And so the committee, if it's the committee and the council's wishes to remove the word private from the bill, does that mean that it would then have to be a public process?
I'm, I'm, okay, that, that's a legal process and I, I'm not a lawyer, but you'd have to speak to the attorneys. But that is the language that Avery Eisenstock has put in every sales ordinance. That's standard, standard language.
Victor, can you speak to that, please?
Victor, can you elaborate on any of this conversation?
Well, Mr. Horton's right. This is, this is standard language. We have it in every bill and there's, there was nothing unusual about when it was coming through my, my desk. If you take the word private out, I mean, it, it allows for other options to exist. I mean, I guess that would be the sum total.
So Victor, just to clarify, the committee.
Counselman, and on every bill that comes through a sale of property, it basically says, "For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at, at either public or private sale." That is the write-up, just about on every public or private sale. So my thing is, if there are any changes of, you know, this process, that has to be another discussion. That's another discussion that doesn't have anything to do with this, honing in on this particular piece of property, which is in the district that I represent. So if you have, so.
And that's fine. Counselman Middleton, I'm not sure why you're honing in on the fact that it's the district you represent. We.
Yes, I'm honing in on that.
I understand that. I understand that, but you know, when, when it comes to sale of property, this, this is the entire city. So my question was very. of property, this, this is the entire city, so my question was very simple for Victor, is if the council committee were to choose to remove the word private, would that force it to become a public sale? And the reason why I ask this, just because this is the way things have always been done, doesn't mean that that is correct. The way things, business has been conducted in Baltimore City has, has been problematic for years, and so I, I don't subscribe to the way that this has always been done is the way to go, so I'm asking Victor very care, very clearly, if the committee or the council were to choose, if the committee or the council, if the committee or the council were to choose to remove the word private, does that mean that the process would have to become a public process? And I'm not just saying that on this thing, I'm saying.
Yes, you are, because we're talking about this particular bill, and that's all, that's all this committee is concerned about, and that's all, that's what the questioning should be about.
That is.
If you have a general question.
It's not a general question.
About the whole process, about the total process of this, you need to, you need to have the conversation.
This is a very specific question about this, about this bill that's in front of the, the committee and the council, is, there's a word in there, the word is private, okay? We're a public body, if the, if the council committee and the council were to remove the word private, Victor, does that mean that then this would have to become a public pro, process? Instead of the mayor being able to conduct this sale behind closed doors?
If you remove the word private, it would be a public sale.
Thank you.
Victor, Walter.
Walter.
Victor, is this a part of legis, legislative process, or is this a part of a policy process? Does the council have the ability legally to change the regulations that's in this
I, I believe they do, I'm gonna have to, I'd have to check the charter, and if you give me a moment, I can check that charter provision, but, but I believe that they, that would, that, it's a policy issue, from my standpoint, unless, unless the charter says something else, it's a policy standpoint.
Okay.
And why don't I, I can go up there and check the charter, it'll take a moment.
And while, and while you're doing that, I have another specific question about the public testimony we just heard. The, the gentleman who runs the center had said that, you know, mentioned about, you know, that there's no grants or anything else from the city, other than utilities, and that they have no problem covering the utilities, which is, which is great to hear. So I guess my question would be, can we hear a little bit more about the economic position of the building, what it takes to run, I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of activity in the building, a lot of, a lot of things going on, and so, can we hear a little bit about what it takes to, to keep financially, just the numbers, what it takes to keep that going? Because if the building can then absorb the $259,000 of utilities that the city has been paying every year, if they can easily absorb that, my question is really, where's that revenue coming from, and who does that revenue go through? Is that, you know, who's the entity, and, and what's, and what's the revenue sources?
Victor, and, excuse me, Councilman, but I'm not gonna hold up this bill, things that you're asking, yes, 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 Councilman.
I'd like to move the bill favorably.
Hold on a second.
Move the, excuse me, um, there's a water, Councilman Slifer, you're out of water. I have, I have a member, I have a member of the committee.
I asked a question, I'm entitled to.
Madam Chair.
Chairman, Chairman.
Point of order, there's.
Chairwoman, please do not censor me, I asked a question, you called on me, I asked a question. Please stop, please stop muting me, I asked, you, you, you allowed me to ask my question.
Councilman Slifer, you cannot, you cannot answer until you're recognized from the chair.
You recognize me, I was asking a question based on you recognizing me, and you just keep muting my computer, I'm asking you to not censor me, and not censor the council, I know that this is being in the bill, it's private sale, and I just want to do this as a private sale like you've mentioned, I am a member of the Baltimore City Council, I'm entitled to ask questions, and it is quite concerning to me, and to be concerning to every single member of this council, the fact that on a, on a WebEx hearing, that the chairwoman of this committee feels that it's okay to mute a member of the Baltimore City Council, who is independently elected, to mute a member of the Baltimore City Council is, it's unconscionable, you called on me, I have a list of questions, I'm entitled to ask these questions, and I will not be censored, and it's, and it's, and it's.
Councilman, you're not, you're not being censored, and I wanna.
You guys keep muting me.
Let me say this, as a chair, I'm not muting you, everyone is hearing what you're saying.
Because I keep unmuting myself.
What, you're, you're, you're interrupting the chair of this committee, and here's what I wanna say, you have been asking a lot of questions to, with the Law Department and with Real Estate, and I'm asking, Victor, if you can get answers to these questions, and get them to Councilman Slifer, and I wanna move on with, moving on with this particular bill, and get, we have a member of the committee that has asked to move the bill, and do I have a second?
In the middle, and he asked to move the bill in the middle of my question.
Second.
So.
And I have Councilman Riceinger second.
Are you gonna allow this process to happen in every other district? Because when there's sales of property in other districts.
Councilman.
You've wanted to, and so are you saying that?
Why are you, I, I just don't understand.
I'm asking questions during a committee hearing, and you're not allowing me to ask my questions. Okay, I'll ask the questions, I can ask the questions on the floor of the council, or we can discuss it in the committee, like the city charter and the process of the council is supposed to be asked, somebody gave public testimony, I'm asking questions on that, and I'm, I'm not quite sure why there's, why there's a move to, to move this along without, without any input.
I'll call you back, I'm on the city council hearing, meeting.
Councilman Costello, I see your hand up, committee member, committee member.
Yeah, Councilwoman, or Chairwoman Middleton, point of order, there's a motion on the floor that I made that's been seconded by the councilman from the 10th district.
Thank you. I'm ready to take a vote. Chair Middleton is a yes, Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Is a yes, Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Riceinger?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
All in the affirmative, this bill will be moved to second reader on June 8th.
My birthday, young.
Thank you, the meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Jesus.
I'm sorry, point of clarification, is the next council meeting the 15th?
The council meeting is on the 8th. Huh? It might be the 15th.
Okay, I believe the next.
We'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.